Hello and we are back! So there is the poster somewhere under here, let's just check it, where it is. Nice, next one is done. Ghost in town, what is this one? Journal of ghost in towns. What's this town, the street? Oh okay, ghost in, let's do it. Oh, where this goes? Ooh, just like that? Hard to rogue, oh yeah, that's a big... Big boss here. Yeah, I know he's there, I know, I know, it's just... I want to sniff around a little bit. Okay, so nothing there. Wife? Her voice is so familiar! Is it Diana in 1847, in the game? Hitman 2? It really sounds like her! Hmm. But there's something there!
Duty free and detail free. Yeah, sure, I'm in. Hmm, still done, I guess.
How much do I have? 63, ooh, yeah, I can... Wha? Wait until Rogue is ready. Can I merc afterlife? Oh, this is so small, street cred. What about you? Ah, still?
Hope you found him.
What's new?
Let's see what you got.
Hmm. Hmm, hmm.
Must be prepping him for a transfer. Chinese corporal playbook's an open one to me. This looks like the old vanishing pigeon. Think Hellman might be in one of them? Thing is, which one?
Hmm. Ooh!
So what's the bad news? And here, we're too close to Kang Tao. We even give that AV a dirty look, their backup hustle will be on us. But, right here's Jackson Plains. Narrow corridor, just outside the city, and just out of Kang Tao's reach. Gonna need a native to the area, someone who'll set up the op, cobble together the gear.
Hmm.
What kind of gear are we talking? Even tracking her will be difficult. Plus, this model packs next-gen defenses. It's not about firepower. There are ways, and people who know them, or who can at least improvise on a theme.
Hmm.
Just one. Pan Am Palmer. She can't count on her clan anymore, but she's a true nomad. She knows those lands. And she will help you. Won't have a choice. Won't have a choice? Does not sound enticing. Not for her, not for me. Enticing comes at a price you can't possibly afford. Can't possibly afford to blow this chance at Nab and Hellman. Your operation, your call. Strange. The nomads give the city and city folk a wide berth. Varies by clan, by the connections they have, the depth of shit they're in. But you're right. Aldicaldos are rarely willing to do biz with the city. Pan Am's got a different take? Yep, on everything, it seems. Why's Pan Am gotta help me? I sense a catch. Pretty big one. Occasionally, Pan Am moves merch for me. Last job? Well, wasn't a good day for her. She run into a hitch? Complete bust, actually. Lost the goods and her ride. Pan Am will do anything to get the load back. Means her dignity. I know her. Okay. Guess I can try to help her, but if we don't know where to look, I mean... We do. I do. You know, but wouldn't tell Pan Am. Aim to play cat and mouse with me, too? My aim is to know an opportunity when I see one, and then to seize it. Say I told her everything. What do you think she'd have done? Grabbed her iron and gone on the warpath, that's what. Not hard to see how that could ended. And there's nothing I hate more, than losing good people to plain stupidity. I'm her only chance, and she's my only chance. Two pawns on Rogue's board. You're quick. For a pawn. Fine, let me hear what you know. Rocky Ridge, ghost town just outside Night City. Pan Am knows where. You'll go there, get the merch back, wheels too. Naturally, you'll call her first. Sending you her deets. All clear. Thanks. Good luck.
Yes.
Hello? I can't... Hey Pan Am. Got your number from Rogue. Name's V. Great, where's that old warhorse wanna kick me now? This thing between you and Rogue, couldn't care less. Got a job for ya. Good, but I'm overextended at the moment. With the merch in your car? Getting him back? I can help with that.
Yes, okay. Ah, how far you are? 2.2... Okay. Oh my god, what the hell, where the hell are you? Ooh, we have a cart there. Is there any cars between? Nah... There is no cars there. No cart, no carts. I mean, the posters. Hmm, if I'm already going there, I would like to get... Not upgrades, I want the tech stuff. Uh, junk shop? No, 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 no. Junk, no, I need... Hmm, I need that... Uh, netrunner. Yes, I need those. Those things, I need netrunner stuff. Uh... There's nothing between, wait, how will I get this one? Yeah, there is some more. Huh, wonder how I get this? Oh, there's a monocartist there, that's good. Let's save it, let's save it. Because I like this gun like crazy, this is so... Lizzie, yeah. Mods, do I have any mods? No, I don't care about mods, no, 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 no. EPS. Gun. Ooh, this is good, I want to... Craft upgrade. Lizzie, 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 the default. If, wait, if I'm holding, wait... Inventory. Uh, shotgun, 100% you go away. You go away, I don't want you. Rare. Tech sniper rifle. Uh, I could skip it. Maybe need rifle. Light machine gun. Couple of green stuff. What's this? No little. Which one is 340, yeah, I will take that one. Uh... You know what, I'm already home. Let's put some stuff away, where is my home? Ah! Selling deposit items. Wait, 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 wait. Ah, there. Let's get rid of some stuff. No, 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 I don't want to sell, I want deposit. No, 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 not selling. Drop point 20, no, 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 I want to... Use to sell and depositing items, no, 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 how? Apartment. Let's take home. I don't know how it works, it says deposit, but it only lets me sell. Weird. What's up, police? Yeah, I can get a little bit lighter. Drop point, yeah, drop point. No, it says... Yeah, it says drop point. But it says only wants to sell. Ah, do we have any... Ooh, we have all level ups, nah, keep it. I might need them. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Stash, okay, we have already some stuff there. Oh yeah, we have some stuff. All the big guns, what I can use. This is sniper rifle. Filters. Tech. Tech. No, this one I can destroy it. I need rifle. And... Again dismantle this one. Elected. Uh, close, 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 close. Okay, this is equipped. Rare. I need that one maybe. Rare, no, I keep that one, I put it on. Oh, boots. I can take that one. Dismantle, 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 dismantle. Inventory. Really? Again dismantle you. Uh... Increase armor pie. 57, ooh! Mods. Yeah, I need that one. Upgrades, yeah, keep this. Rosca hazmat suit, we can destroy that one. Weapon. What? I didn't take the stash. Uh, price, TPS. Lizzie, I want that one. And some automates, gun, yeah, Achilles. Yes. That should be enough, inventory, crafting. Lizzie. Upgrade. Lizzie. I like it, 273. I can do it couple of dimes, quite nice. Rare iconic. Wait, did I use this one? Did I use, did I really use Lizzie? Thermal damage change. 13% burn chance, yes, fire's extra. Yeah. Inventory. MP3s released tech rifle. Yeah, let's do Lizzie. Lizzie crafting, wait, maybe, uh, crafter? Engineering crafting. No, 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 crafting, yes. Rare items. Yes. Ooh, crafted weapons, ah, I need 11, 11 for that, clothes give you... 14, nah, I can't do nothing. Are more effective consumables, what consumable, my health? Uh, that's... Grand sensor upgrade item for free! What the hell is that? Reduce crafting cost by 5 per points. Item, ooh, that's good, that means 15% if I put... Yeah, let's do it, let's spend. Let's spend that upgrades. Uh, we can do upgrade. Insufficient components, oh, every level it costs you more, what the hell? I don't have epic. I have 297, that's massive. Yeah, I want to keep this, this is 30% chance. What the hell I have these ones, where the hell I get these ones? Armor. Weird. Armor, I don't have any, I don't have nothing, nothing, nothing. I could do this one, but I don't use them that much. So... Wait, why did I... Weird. Oh, it's 92 level. Okay. Crafting. Did I get level up something? No. Wait, I get something? Crafting reduces cost, reduces cost nice? Yes, yes, gimme, gimme, gimme. Components, components, components. Legendary, legendary pistol. Uh, bonus request chance, poison chance, ooh, okay, poisoned. Empty slot, empty slot, empty slot. Mods, mods, oh my god, this is much better, how much it cost me? Ooh, 37,000, nah. No, 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 no. Pistol armor. We can... Uncommon items, no, 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 I need... I need like rare. Oh, this is extra expensive. What do I actually need, it was rare or... Upgrades. Rare and... 32, 32. Rare and rare. Ah, who cares, let's take all of it, I have money. Crafting, upgrades. Yeah, it increases every time. Every time. Ah, idiot, why I'm doing like this, this is stupid. I could use this one just to level up myself. Without spending. What the hell is this one? I can do level seven. Level seven. Crafting. Yeah. Ooh, wait, I get something. Per tooth cost, per point unlock new crafting specs for consumables, percent clothing. Crafti- from crafting. Oh, nice. Crafting. Nice, nice! Oh wait, I need to go out. Let's, let's go, let's go, let's go! But where, what? Do I have some backpack? Something in my backpack? I can, oh, I can dismantle some of stuff. Because I don't use them. It would be nice to... Can I... Hmm. Increase several components crafting, yes. Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. It's cool, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool! There it is. Wait, do I have... I think I had... Yeah, I had location. Why do I... Waste my time for that? There's, eh... One more, no, no, not here. It's somewhere up here. Am I going right way? Huh? Oh, it's home! Jesus Christ! Let's do... Fast travel. Ah, they're live. Look, look. Destination. What? What? Wait, what happened? Did I... Why it's loading? I didn't put anywhere. And sensor, okay. What? What the hell? Mm-hmm. Okay, I will take these two posters because one is here, one is like next to the... My mission and one is little bit further away, but I can take it first. No, I don't care about cars. What the... Like I have money to buy anything. Eh, I will go there later. I will take this one first. Yeah, then I can get rid of it. I don't know how many I have, like thirteen, fourteen already? So get rid of them first. Nomad land. Nice! Okay, good to know. Is there any fast travel locations? Can you give me? Yes, there it is. Nice, 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 nice. Then biggest one is close to them. Ooh! Break, 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 break. No, I don't care about drug sales. What I do with that? Ooh, ow, that hurt. I don't care about vehicles. There I... Ooh, bandits. There you are. Okay. What? Nice. Nice, 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 nice. What's up? We gonna get it?
Hey, come on. Calm down.
Don't tell me what to do. Fine.
Know where to find the cargo and your car, but you go alone, you won't get him back. And you could lose some of the house besides. So let's figure something out.
What do you want?
Need to hit a cane tow transport. Won't be easy. Wanna know I can count on you.
Are you out of your goddamn mind?
About you or the job? Cane tow's AV route'll take it over Jackson Plains? Heard that should help us.
Yeah, I doubt it.
Gonna be a guy on board. Need to talk to him.
Fuck.
In return, info on your cargo, help in getting back what's yours. We got a deal?
I don't know. I... Shit! Alright, deal. But if you want your thing done, we'll need to get my Thornton back first.
Okay.
So where is it?
Car's in Rocky Ridge. You're supposed to know where that is. Car's there, goods are there.
Nash, you dirty bastard. I will strangle you.
Rocky Ridge. Let's go.
Hang on. I, I should think this through. Fuck. Yes. We'll need backup. We have one brief stop to make on the way.
Wanna tell me where?
Give me a sec. I should call the client. Convince them to leave the bastard hanging. Boss, hey. Nash's gonna pass you the merchant Rocky Ridge. The thing is, the motherfuckers screwed me over. Boss, I will take care of it. I just need you to give me a chance. Boss, come on. How many times have I moved things for you? And how many times have I failed? You have my word. After dark? Okay. No, don't call off the meet, just don't show up. I'll take care of everything. Do you even have to ask? Of course I will. Thanks, boss. You won't regret this. Okay, I have boss some time.
Okay.
Who the hell's boss? Won't cause us any grief, I hope.
Boss is a stand-up guy. Sixth street.
You drive for gang goons.
Is that not allowed? Street punks need things moved. I need money like anyone else.
So, where to now?
The Aldacaldo camp. I need to see some of the old clan.
Don't seem too excited.
That's not your concern. I still have friends there.
Good, let's roll.
Get in.
Hmm, nice, I don't have to try.
Nice ride. Lots of space. Practical.
Say no more. Please.
How the hell did you land in this mess?
I liked the color. They are freshener and boosters, the AK maxed out.
You know I don't mean the car.
What am I supposed to tell you? That I'm not about to let my partner rob me and get away with it? That my fixer made me look like a goddamn fool? What about you? Why do you need that clown from the AV?
This particular clown's got intel I need. And I'm running out of time to get it.
Okay, okay.
Rogue, do better not to worry what her agenda might be.
Goddamn, I can't stand the bitch.
Rogue's queen of the afterlife. Plays her pawns as she pleases.
Did you just call me a pawn?
I got a good look at her. She roasted the top 'cause she reads people. So what if she keeps things to herself? It's a skill in her profession.
Well, I think she's a lying, manipulative bitch. She put me together with that raffin. Did you know that?
Must've had her reasons.
You don't say. Rogue won't open her mouth without weighing the for and against. What to spill and what to withhold.
Yep. Ooh, ooh, that's a... Ooh, this is...
My baby sitter. V, this is Scorpion. Mitch. Two old friends.
Hmm.
Hey, guys.
I've just come by for a spell. Saul needn't know a thing.
Need your help. Raffin screwed Pan Am. Plan is to show him that was a bad idea.
Bad enough to make me sit quietly through all your bullshit. Seriously? You won't help? Generators? You won't help because of some goddamn generators? Is this another joke?
Really could use your help.
Fuck. I don't believe this. So you'll stay put because Saul told you to? You couldn't care less about me?
Pan Am.
Okay. Well, I'll need that rifle of yours. And some of my own stuff.
Ah, of course. Me and her only. All the time.
You disappointed?
Ooh, gorgeous! I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming! Ooh, ooh, let's see. Hmm. Okay, need little bit when kaput. What do we have here? Extra ram, unispec- yeah, I don't care about that one. Ooh! Eyes. Do we have anything? Mode slots. Do we have any modes here? I would like to... Trade. Oh yes. Thermal round. What? Per square. It arrive, mm-hmm, increase. Ooh! Electric damage. Shock and stun on targets. Armor by seven percent. Titanium plating. Okay, nah. Cyberware. Ooh, we have some stuff. Eh, increase. Yeah, I don't care about that. Immune system, nothing there. Available system? Ah, same, same boring stuff. Immune to burns. Ooh, do we have anything better? Four, three, four. Ooh, nine rams. Ooh, nine rams. Seven rams, six buffer, six buffer, four slot. Nah. Nah nah nah, there is nothing what I want. And, ah, this is smart link. I don't care about smart link. Legs. Alright, 45k, yeah.
Wanna get myself chips?
Will you help me with this?
What?
What's inside?
A few odds and ends that should be useful. Take it. Alright, that's everything. Let's go.
What car we gonna take, I wonder? What do we take? What do we take? We take... That one or our? Oh, okay, we take our car. Really? No, I take it on my lap. I'm already in, you're slow.
So, I'm off.
Yeah, yeah, go on, go already. Call us sometime. Keep an eye on her, V.
Mitch and Scorpion seem good souls.
The best friends a girl could ask for. I'd stay in the camp too if I were in their shoes. Fuck Saul and his generators, of course. Yet the Clan comes first. But I'm not part of it anymore.
Still treated you like you're one of them. They care about you.
Uh-huh. Do you have anyone you would call close?
Not right now, no. Could just be a matter of time, though.
Okay.
Were those two in the army?
Scorpion Mitch? Yeah. Panzer boys. They're on contract during the last war.
Panzer boys? Flew those huge transporters?
Scorpion piloted. Mitch ran security. They both got some kick-ass combat implants and a stack of really fucked up nightmares.
Hmm.
So, Rocky Ridge. Empty dusty hole in the middle of bumfuck nowhere, I heard. Natives either moved to Night City or just got the hell out.
Then you know almost all there is to know. The whole area was waiting on a new interstate extension. It was supposed to breathe new life into the town. It didn't happen, of course.
How many ghost towns you think are there? Hundreds?
Countrywide? Thousands. I drove down I-80 the other day. All you have to do is pull over after sundown. It's quiet then. And you hear it.
What's that?
The wind whistling through boarded-up windows. Tumbleweeds scratching across dry sandy tracks. That's how towns die. Not with a bang. But with whispers and whimpers.
Seems you got a real problem with authority.
What?
Rogue? Saul? Your leader?
Their leader.
Seemed in a hurry to delta the hell out of there.
Let's just say Saul wouldn't have been happy to see me.
What happened?
The reason we came to California was because he promised to change for the Aldacaldos. He claimed we would turn over a new leaf. But you saw it. We got a handful of tents on a heap of sand. A hell of a promised land. I wanted something different. Better. Saul's a damned coward. He'll be the end of the Clan, I'm certain.
So?
What do we do?
We get ready to greet the Raffins. And we have little time for that. We'll need to improvise. We should scout first. To look for anything that might be useful.
Down Rocky Ridge could be any deader. Everything's down, nothing works here.
Well, have you found anything?
No dice. Nothing's up, all cut off.
But we'll make it work. Nothing's will roll in after dusk. We will have a surprise ready for them. Let's check the substation.
Okay. Found the breakers, but there's no juice on them!
Not to worry! Come down! I know how to surprise the bastards! Right, so, the intersection is powered from that transformer substation, right? The switchgear on the roof. We'll flip the switch there and everything will light up like Christmas. Understood?
Hmm.
So, classic route. Good old diversion.
You know it. First, we don't know how many are coming. My thinking is it'll be a sizable crew. Second, we have to create an opening to get to my car. If they're bunched together, we won't stand a chance.
So we give them a little light show at the intersection?
Yes. We'll breathe some life into this dusty old town.
Soon as they see the lights, they'll have to check who, why, and how. Nova.
Yep. First we start up the control terminal below. The gear on the roof is a hunk of junk without it. Come on, we'll give it a boost from the car battery. That should do the trick. Wait for me by the substation. I'll bring the car around.
Hmm. Rukidoki. Ooh. Okay, you take time, so I gonna... Sniff around what we have here. Oh, there's something here. Force, really? Really, I can't even get in? What? Weird.
The panel looks to be in good shape. I'll make a bypass circuit to the power supply. That should do it. We'll just have to get it up and running. Grab the jumper cables from the trunk. We'll boost it from the car battery.
Red cable connected.
Give me a moment. I need to hook everything up here. And done. Now the black rattler.
There she goes.
Thought the old jalopy served us well. Okay, I've got Vulcan. Start the terminal inside. And once the power is on in the building, get on that roof.
You got it.
I'll set up on the tower. We'll have the whole intersection on a platter. You flip the breakers when I give you the signal to do so, understood?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I can't get in! Wait, maybe it says I can go outside. Maybe this window? No, I can get in! Oh, crap, no. Ah! I break the glass, it, I can go in. Oh, okay.
Switchgear's got power. Prime. We'll have some fun at the intersection. Let's get into position.
Come on, come on, nah nah nah. Thank you.
Remember, as soon as we see them, you give us power.
Okay.
Got it. Cover me, just in case.
Of course.
No problem.
They're rolling in. In my thorn! You see her?
Really, really hard to miss.
Let's take them by surprise. Let's try to do this quietly. If anything happens, I'll start picking them up. Sound good?
Sounds great.
Which one is our car? Big one? That one?
Get good and ready. The show starts... Now!
Let there be light.
Grab the car shot. The driver has you. For the girl with the mohawk.
Caught them a bunch.
Look her up. They'll set ready. I'll be inside. All over you need.
Breach, breach, breach. Uh, okay. What do we have? Fifty-five, one C. Eighty-nine. Yeah. Shoot. Nailed, okay.
I've been made.
Fuck. Covering you. We have to pick all of them up now.
Okay. Again? Oy oy oy. Really? Are you serious? Again? It's... It's freezing. Little bit. But what you can do? Ah. Yeah. Uh, after, I'll sniff everything out here. Ooh. Good stuff here. Uh... One C. Okay, got two. Ooh, we have some stuff here. It's nice that I don't have to buy any ammo. Everything... We get for free. No? It in the car, ammo already? Oh, this is delivering. Oh wait, something here, ooh. Legendary stuff. Yeah, it's okay.
Move, I'll take the wheel.
There. Couldn't wait another minute, could ya?
Mm-hmm. That's good.
At last.
I wonder what she was delivering?
And? She's prime wheels, isn't she?
Dreamy indeed. No surprise he wanted her back.
She completes me.
See? Managed just fine without Mitch and Scorpion.
Listen, V, it's not over yet.
It's not? You got the cargo, you got your car.
I did not get Nash. Who was not in Rocky Ridge. The fucker didn't show.
Hmm.
Pan Am.
Listen. I have a plan.
And I don't care. The car and the merch, that's what we were after, we got them. Sixth Street awaits, word, and I-
Just listen to me, for fuck's sake! I know where their little hidey hole is. We'll take the old unfinished freeway nearby. They will not be expecting us. I'm sure of it.
Hmm.
Wanna just show up at the Raffin hideout?
Are you out of your mind?
Do you have a better idea? Let me hear it.
Matter of fact, I do! We take this stuff to Sixth Street, then go after Hellman like we planned!
I gave you my word, didn't I? Please, stop writing my ass about Hellman. And do not start acting high and mighty, like you won't lift a finger if it's not in the contract. Just... Just help me get Nash.
Ugh, alright. So where's his hideout?
A hop and skip away. Thanks, V. What Nash did... I placed my trust in him. He was the first person I worked with after leaving the Aldakaldos. After I came to Night City. And I granted him my trust.
Vengeance is rarely worth the risk.
Reason against gut need. An interesting take. I'd like to see for myself.
Okay, can I skip it? Or is right here? You want to tell me they didn't hear our fight? Explosions and stuff? Seriously? Are we getting stuck? Wow! They're pretty good! No! It was gas. Yeah, it was gas. It was gas. Hmm. What? What the hell am I now? I'm a driver now? Wait, what? Yeah, they... Just run when they cast you. You can't survive that one. It takes so long to reload, uh... Give the health boost. It's just too goddamn slow! Then animation is really, really slow for that. Oh, it's Little Buggy? Oh, this is me. I think it's my computer for that. What? He can hit me and I can't? Behind the car? What? What the hell is this?
I'm on him! Come on, V!
This is... This is good weapon. You can shoot through everything. Nice. I need ammo for that. Died? Yeah, he died. No, no, he's still alive. Goddamn, you're moving. Ah, somebody hacked me. There's one more. One more somewhere. Ooh, legendary stuff. Come on, give me all your stuff. Everything. Gimme, gimme, gimme everything. I'm gonna sniff everything out. Check it, what we have here. Ooh, just so good stuff here. That's some crazy... That is good stuff. Good, 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 good stuff here. I need sniper ammo. I need to upgrade this ammo. This one too, sniper. Okay, this is few last ones. Hmm, something is here. Anything else? Did I miss something? Yes, I missed something. Ammo. I need lots of ammo, ammo, ammo. Yep, it's okay now. Hmm. Yeah, that's good.
Sixth Street not likely to pull anything?
Sunset Motel. It should be close by. Skip the ride, yeah. Skip it. Skip it, skip it, skip it. Damn, that sniper rifle. I need to upgrade that baby too. Damn, it's good.
We work together.
Hmm. Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it. No, 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 no. Don't stop. Wait, wait, wait. 10%... Wait, wait, wait. Inventory. Uh... The bills. What I get from new items. To take from the hospital when I was hospital. Why did they give me... Sunshine? Long increase. Did I just lost them or what? I don't know. Ooh, few more. Few weapons. Hehe. Oh wait, I should put resources.
So that package for Street, what was it? They trading them?
Yes. They have deals. With black clinics, rippers...
Cheers. Here's to what's yet to come.
To what's to come.
What? I'm finishing everything? Damn, girl! Hmm.
I've come up with a plan. A first draft. But I need to sleep on it, work it out. Then we can talk about the details. I think it best to rent rooms here. Just to stay in the area. We'll get to work around midnight. It'll help keep us out of sight. Agreed?
Hmm. Oh! Mm-hmm.
I'm glad we met too. And we'll do it again tomorrow.
I like to hear that. Are we alright?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You stand here. Hollow. I wonder the rooms. I don't think it's like three star. I don't think it's like three star. 206, okay. No, I don't need to look mirror. No, 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 no. Let's save it just in case. I don't know, maybe some fight. This is bed? Hmm, okay. Don't need anything. It's just matrons and some other stuff. And... You're okay. What? Oh, she's gone? Sometime later? Great. Okay, breathe. No, I don't want this. There, do that. Ghost town. Hmm. Okay. See you next time! Bye-bye!